So.
Good.
It's quite a lot.
I am.
A less true scratch.
I was.
I'm in this way and then you.
You're all over me.
Should we have this?
Oh, you're.
I've been shopping.
Well, it was.
We're sure.
Well, you did.
I tried.
One of them.
Why you're back, you're not.
I was.
Other than.
That's a track that's there obviously.
Until we do.
Your presentation is not to have.
But they want to.
I have.
There's.
There is.
You don't have to hold up.
I'm scared.
I had to.
I had to.
Why you share it?
Yes.
So I just want to say.
I will be out.
Yeah.
And then.
My first side is.
So.
I'm not.
I mean, that presentation will be over Jesus.
Second.
We can't.
I sense like.
Yeah.
Like if he looks.
I love these.
I do.
I think it looks.
Yeah.
But for so many.
I'll be satisfied.
There is.
You.
Yeah, there.
And she'll slip next to me.
Ryan's really like during the top street.
I wouldn't let you.
And our kids are always.
Oh, this.
All of us.
It's that first year.
Twenty five.
Okay.
Okay.
Have to get sixteen hours.
Right?
I can.
And at the next meeting quarter, welcome everyone.
Nice to be.
Barbie.
We got somebody with my yell.
Oh, damn.
Making everybody happy to be.
Happy to be a person. Um, so it is good to be. Uh, to see everybody's face. Over the map. So, uh, we're gonna start tonight with the. Let's make sure. The title.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then now we're gonna. First, I think we should turn the reading efficiency. So is that voluntary citation? Let me pick someone. Let's go. Let's go. Let's tell them. We start with, um, Debbie.
Well, then you figure out where it's going this year.
Okay.
You checked out of my board book here.
Yeah.
There we go.
All right, good job. Stop like that.
All good.
Working on it. I'm a slow loading tube, so.
What is?
Slid.
I'm shit.
Come with you guys.
No, not loading.
Do you want me to fix up any others?
Okay. Lakeland Joint School District's daily mission is to maximize student learning and ensure every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally every day in all involvements.
Thank you so much. All right, the three and the must like.
No, it's all good.
Okay. All right, uh, next would be patron input. I know we've received several emails. There were a couple of emails, uh, sent to the entire board, so the entire board is aware of these emails. Um, but due to the disparaging, uh, comments, uh, they're not gonna be read, uh, out loud. Uh, they will be responded to, uh, by Chrissy. Just make sure the patron understands that they were heard. And we are going to be talking. I'll bring it up again later. Uh, I think we need to review our policy on patroning because I think we've kind of gotten off track with the whole Zoom meeting thing on what's allowed during patron comment. And it's a lot easier to say these things, uh, via email than it is actually in person. So I think we're gonna wanna review that and make sure that we're following our own policy on that. So Chrissy's going to read. What do you?
I have four patron input tonight, uh, for the board. The first one is from Ryan Everland, the Timberlake High School principal. Uh, I want to share with our students, staff, and parents. I want to share that our students, staff, and parents showed true grit and perseverance during the spring semester at Timberlake High School. We had successes despite the monumental challenges presented to our THS families. Our THS staff were diligently around the clock to care for every student academically and socially emotionally. Our students did a fantastic job working through the closure, and our parents were phenomenal. Timberlake High School was recently recognized as a school of excellence for the second straight year. This is a huge honor that our students, staff, and parents have achieved through teamwork. Our graduation ceremony was a big success as well. We will be looking to implement some of this year's plans in the future. I want to thank the school board and the district leadership team for supporting our THS families through these difficult times. Our students deserve the best, and I believe as a team, we are providing the best. Go Tigers, Ryan Everland. This next patron input is from Jamie Farnsworth. My name is Jamie Farnsworth, and I am writing today in a hope that my letter will be read publicly to the Lakeland School District Board. In our world today, we can live countries apart, but still find ourselves connected in ways we could not have imagined that long ago. I say this because I learned that due to the COVID- nineteen spread across the country, many people in organizations are finding innovative ways to keep their communities connected and informed through this unprecedented time. I commend Lakeland School District for the open forum opportunity to do so. And it is important to me that I write this letter to you all today. I hope that you will hear my heart through my story and acknowledge with me that we should consider information from many sources in order to make a sound decision about what we believe. I can spend hours telling you details of our journey, but in absolute respect of your time, and I will try to restrain. My family have lived in the North Idaho area all of our children's lives. Our son Cameron and daughter Haley both attended Lakeland Schools in eighteen years. Both our kids work hard, and we too work hard and learn to help them succeed in any way we can. Our daughter Haley had several adversities in her education, and some stemmed from an autoimmune disorder that affected her memory and learning capabilities. Between twenty fourteen and fifteen, Haley began to struggle emotionally and experienced bullying that hurt her so deeply that she began self-harm. And we found ourselves in a new and very scary time. We sought professional help for Haley through junior high, through junior high, and worked with Lakeland staff on our educational requirements for moving into high school. She was accepted into Mountain View High School her freshman year, and it remained to be a challenge, both socially and educationally. Yet, as I sit here writing this, I have gone through hundreds of email threads with staff and principals throughout our education trying to help aid in her success. There was no lack of effort on anyone's part, including Haley's, for the absolute desire to see her prevail. However, at the end of her freshman year, she failed one class and was told she could not go back to Mountain View for an entire semester. This devastated her, but we had to move forward. Haley had severe social anxiety and feared that now and consideration was taken into where she could attend school. We discussed with Lakeland staff and counselors that Haley might benefit from online ed, and thus she was enrolled in IDBA for her sophomore year. What happened shortly after the school year began changed our lives forever. I met Dr. Meyer in early twenty seventeen, just months after our daughter Haley chose to end her life in our home before school on September thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. We were already working with the Panhandle Health District and the Suicide Prevention Action Network in our community. So it was an important task to connect with the school districts on this matter. It was a challenge to first coordinate time with Becky, but upon our first meeting, we all knew that only together could we do something to help our communities. After continuous meetings and collaboration with Span, Lakeland Joint School District, Lakeland School District brought many family, staff, and community members together for a new idea. This was the beginning of a beautiful relationship in our area, like none that I thought I would see as a grieving mother. The Life Awareness Coalition was formed, and we believed it was good, but we had a long road ahead of us. We knew that many people struggled with mental illness and even suicidal ideation, but the question remained of how we could help them hope and value in their life, help them find hope and value in their lives again, and stop the stigma surrounding speaking about thoughts and feelings. Our objective to collect a hope was to bridge gaps in all surrounding communities so that we could support each other with resources and education. We all believed that helping our children was not just the job of our parents, but of schools, doctors, nurses, churches, counselors, et cetera. We strive for community involvement to acknowledge all families and let them know that they're not alone. That someone was doing something. We all started this together. Again, I could spend many hours speaking with you about our journey through this process. I hope that one day I might tell you of the many people we have befriended and continue to work with on this matter. Today, I come to tell you of how much I honor and respect Dr. Meyer for having the courage to stand up with us against an unseen enemy that continues to try and tear our families apart. She could have easily turned a blind eye or a deaf ear because she did not know us or even have one encounter with Haley, but I tell you, none of your staff did that to us. They all listened to Haley's story with tears in their eyes and aching hearts the first district training day after the coalition started. I'm proud to stand next to her and Lakeland staff to spearhead this fight for life in our, in all of our communities. I'm honored that we feel we have been called back to North Idaho to continue this good work. Over the years, I've heard of opposition about efforts being made to help many. I have heard rumors and lies about the people whose hearts are only to help those hurting the most. We are among them. We should not permit it because this is the very division that is tearing our communities apart. My husband Jason and I were stricken through the heart when asked to participate in that upcoming docu-series, Irreplaceable. This entire process began because some people cared about the fact that our daughter made a horrible choice that hurt us all deeply forever.
We are over two minutes. I really hate the cut.
And this is a public document.
Okay.
So I can share it with all the board as well. And I can.
Sorry.
Two minutes.
The heart. I'm sorry. I didn't cut that off. We have to. Do not follow our rules anywhere. Try to follow. We can.
Sorry. It's okay. Okay. The next one. I need to breath. That was long. Um, it is from Tiffany Melton, principal of Timberlake Elementary. Dr. Meyer is a superintendent of the highest caliber. I could cite multiple administrative duties she performs with the utmost efficiency, like enforcing board policies, implementing federal programs, and maintaining fiscal responsibility. However, that's not her greatest asset. Dr. Meyer leads with one goal in mind, and that's growing the lives of students in Lakeland District's care. This is my twentieth year in public education. I've worked with five different superintendents and not one has had a vision for students like Dr. Meyer. More than that, she goes about concrete ways to bring that vision to fruition. She develops and brings out the best in the personnel of LJSD to form a team of highly qualified educators whose sole purpose is to help children grow. As a second-year administrator, I personally benefited from Dr. Meyer's, oops, I lost my spot. Sorry. From her mentorship. Her implementation of learning walks for administration helps all administrators see and understand the entire scope and sequence of the district, of the students in our district. No other district in our area does that for students and admin, administrators. Through her guidance, we practice teacher observations as a team. This is to ensure consistent collaboration across all grade levels, but sport and development of our teachers. No other district in our area does that for students and administrators. Her most recent efforts during this pandemic have gone above and beyond for the staff, students, and most importantly, the community of Lakeland. She worked tirelessly with the administrators to develop the best, to offer continued remote learning for our students. She worked with our community to ensure who was available seven days a week for those in need. No other district in our area did that for their community. For every person in education, the goal should be to help make students' lives better. Dr. Meyer's leadership allows us to be true in our district. Despite ebb and flow of the politics of education, you need look no further than the classrooms of our schools to see the results of her vision. The employees of the LJSD are of the highest quality because of her leadership, but more importantly, the reason for her being here. Our students thrive because of her. I'm available at any time for further input regarding her outstanding leadership. Tiffany Melton. And then one more. My name is Tom Elliott, and I have been a rapport president for seventeen years. I have two sons who attend Lakeland Junior High School and a wife Erin, and is a dentist in post-balls. I received a call in the summer of twenty eighteen asking if I would like to join other community, community members for a long-range planning committee for the Lakeland Joint School District to help navigate, navigate the explosive growth of our area and the effect it would have on the school district. We had a plan to meet the last Tuesday of every month and a Saturday to visit almost every school in the district. The school district administrators were invited to these meetings so the planning committee could ask questions and bounce ideas off of them. They were by no means running the meeting, and there were numerous meetings where they weren't in attendance. After many hours of debate and all of the pros and cons of building new schools versus renovation of old schools indicted me to prepare, it was decided by the committee to run a bond, build a new high school, and turn the current Lakeland High School into a new middle school. Currently, sixth graders are in the elementary schools, and the existing buildings are in need of overhaul. I have seen some very negative social media posts about Dr. Meyer and the current administration, and thought it was time to give my two cents. I did not know them before being asked to be on the long-term planning committee, but since I have been involved, I can say that I've grown very fond of them, and I'm happy to call them my friends. I saw nothing but transparency from each of them. I know in my heart that they want what is best for our students in our community. In good conscience for what is best for our students, I feel I have to speak up before this witch hunt gains momentum. Support our administration, school board, because we have a good one that has been previously, that has previously been void of politics. Support our administration working towards the good of our children so we can support our future Lakeland Joint School District.
Okay, onto your report presentation. Staff reports. We have the. Twenty 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 project team member presentation. Chad Parsons and I. It's Carissa.
Carissa.
Carissa Childress.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry. So I would, uh, like to introduce. Um, I asked three people to be here tonight to explain the protege, um, team meeting. We used to call it the protege teacher team meeting, but then we had other people like SLPs, counselors, other certified staff that was on the protege team. So now we just call it protege team. And, um, something that I've done ever since I was a building principal was have a protege because statistics show the number one time that people drop out is within the first five years because education, people thinking, you can see people, there's jokes all over about people during the COVID, like, oh, my gosh, teachers should get paid a billion dollars, and lots of different jokes about it, but people do know. Once you start teaching, they're like, this is way harder than we thought it was. And people within the first five years, that's the highest incidence of people getting out of education. So the way to combat that and proactively work on it is to have a protege mentor program. So, um, I've done this my entire career, but Lisa and I, um, started this, uh, together my first year here, is that we said, let's do it together because she has a heart for it. Uh, we were actually, both of us were the first two in the entire state. We were in that very first cohort that got certified as a trainer for Charlotte Danielson, so we both know it really well inside and out. And so we started the protege program to be able to, um, have anybody that's new to the district or new to education. So anybody in their first year, and you're gonna hear from Carissa, she's been doing this for a lot of years. And some people may say, well, why do they need to be in it then? Well, we want them to be able to learn about the culture, the climate, what's the family feel, what makes Lakeland stand out differently? And then also, you'll hear from her, she can help mentor other people that have been doing, that are just starting with some of her ideas from other districts. So it's been a really nice mix for us to be able to have this. And honestly, no matter how bad of a day, it's like going into, like we were talking earlier, trustee talks about kindergarten classrooms. That's how we feel about the proteges. No matter what kind of day we've had or week or anything, we look forward to the proteges because they're totally energetic. They're sponges, they're wanting to learn, and they're excited about being in our district. So I'd initially ask one very category one teacher who just, you'll see on tonight's board agenda, hopefully, is rehired as a sixth-grade teacher, Andrea Shankland, but her son is graduating. Um, so she has a graduation tonight, so she can't be here. Uh, Carissa Childress is gonna talk to you, um, and she's been a very experienced teacher, but she was in our protege program. And then a unique one is Chad is an instructional technology director, and he is now doing CTE, and he is doing an alternate route to be a teacher of computer science, and he's gonna share. So I don't wanna give away what they're talking about, but I wanted the board to hear of different perspectives about the protege program. So, that being said, Chad, I, can you put Carissa's presentation up? Since I know you don't have to do that.
Which one is this?
It's either the first or the second.
Uh.
This one's. Let's go for it.
Either one, maybe. Sure.
Or the one's.
Oh, yeah, look how cute I am.
I didn't know why you'd be a Cubs fan, though.
Um, and MLB. They just announced it coming back on July twenty-fourth. I'm very excited for sixty-eight.
So.
Very exciting.
I, I think the, the board of trustees needs to thank Dr. Meyer because she went over about half the stuff I was gonna say in my speech. So my, my speech should be really short. No, actually, I'll probably just repeat what she said, so just ignore half of it. I'll let you go first.
Okay. Um, and you're way more prepared than I am.
Do I wanna go first?
Throw chicken scratch.
It would look better if I went first.
Probably.
You're gonna be a lot better than I am.
No, I'm not.
I don't wanna. I don't wanna go second. You'd look really bad, so.
It's my.
Let's do this. I'm gonna go. I'm gonna go first. Okay, so I believe my presentation was already. I believe my presentation was already shared with you guys. Ooh, this is the best part, actually. Okay, so I'm not really gonna go over. I'll skim through my presentation, but I'm not really gonna go through the presentation because I believe you guys have it properly. So, um, but I'm gonna go into my background because I think how I got here, you kind of need to know where I came from. So my name is Chad Parsons. I am the instructional technology director for the district. Um, I've been in the tech department for the district since October of two thousand and five. So almost fifteen years now. Got some grit here. So it's fair, it's fair to say that I'm a techie type person, right? I mean, technology suits my personality because it's constantly changing. You can never get ahead of it as much as you try, and I thrive on that kind of atmosphere. I, I love the challenges. And, um, you know, there's plenty of challenges. So I mean, things change on a monthly, sometimes daily basis, so. Um, but I'm not here to talk about me as a tech director. I'm here to talk about the biggest challenge I think I've ever taken on. And Becky, Becky alluded to, um, is Mr. Parsons, the teacher. So, uh, late last year, after talking over with a couple of my supervisors, I decided to apply for the career technical education endorsement in computer science. Uh, I wanted to pass on some skills that I've learned over the years to future generations of students. Um, I felt like if somebody would have done that for me, I would really love that. So I just felt selfish, so to speak, to not try that. So I was approved, and to be honest, instantly overwhelmed with emotions, both excitement and severe anxiety. Like, I'm like, what am I doing? What is, what I'm, what am I doing? I'm not a teacher. I have never taught students, ever. What if, what if I'm boring? What if, you know, what if they hate me? What if I hated? What if I hate teaching? What if I can't prepare? Um, that was actually the only concern that my supervisors had when I discussed this with them was, um, are you, you know, able to keep up? Because I have a day job, so to speak. I have plenty of duties as a tech director, and this is something that I'm taking on because I wanna try it and see if I can do it. But juggling those is tough. So my head was swimming, um, but a couple of things worked out in my favor this year. Number one is the protege program. Amazing program. Um, Lakeland brings in any new first-year teacher to the district, to the protege program. Um, you go over things like the Charlotte Danielson framework for teaching. You go over how to gain respect and rapport from your students, um, how to effectively evaluate student performance. That one in my opinion is the hardest one. Uh, I'm still learning that one, but, uh, I'll get there. And, uh, things of that nature. And number two, the next big thing that super helped is, um, I was able to co-teach my first semester with my district-providing mentor. So the district provided me a mentor, and she was in computer science, and I was able to co-teach with her. So I was able to observe her, uh, but she was also able to observe me. So when I was teaching lessons, she was able to give me valuable feedback, um, which I severely needed because, uh, as soon as we went to second semester, nobody knew this was gonna happen, of course, but we went to the remote learning environment. And, um, this wasn't really the plan, but once we went to second semester, those classes were handed off to me. So, uh, I was on my own, which, which, that suits my skill set. Obviously, I'm a tech person, so remote learning is not a big deal. Um, but not having that first semester with her, and, uh, I would have never survived. So, um, thank you, the district, for the protege program, but just as, just as much as thank you for the mentor, because that's invaluable. So, um, I'm forever grateful for the support they provided. I don't have a lot of time. I only get to teach one or two periods a day because I do have so much other going on, but I still feel it's viable. I still feel the impact is there. And, you know, who knows? I might be teaching my future replacement. I might be teaching the person who's gonna create the next big company to try to take on Apple or Microsoft. I mean, in technology, the possibilities are endless, so. I do wanna show you a couple of things. So, let me go back here. So this is a, a couple of things. This is a three-D printing project that, uh, one of my students did. It's a cheap logo. Uh, that was really cool. And, uh, my, the component I was most proud of was establishing a culture for learning. So basically, having an area that people, students want to come to and they want to learn. Um, and then as, as a new teacher, of course, there's always something to work on. Um, and the one I picked for working on was, um, using questioning and discussion techniques. So I'm, I'm a little too nice, uh, so that's something I'm gonna work on. But I always, I always ask for volunteers. And I, and I, we need to pick out certain students and make sure that they understand the content. So no more volunteers. Um, my biggest aha, I've mentioned it throughout this whole thing, was having a professional community, having protege program, having a mentor was invaluable. I mean, I'm a tech person. If I didn't have that, I don't know how this year would work. I would have been back full-time tech director. And, um, I'm a bit of a jokester, so we were, we were asked to put minimum four slides and maximum five slides. So I didn't have anything for my fifth slide, but I wasn't against the rules to have five slides. So this is my fifth slide, and this poor girl over here, she spent too much time recording. Thank you for your time.
Okay, so that's why I did it. She likes to pop up in my classroom a lot. Okay, so I just wanna explain the protege program to you just in case you weren't really clear about it. Um, like Chad said, it is a program for all first-time teachers, new to the district, not new to the, you know, just every, not new to teaching, but new to the district. So, um, there was nineteen in the class, I think. I don't remember. There's a lot. There's a lot of us. Um, and it was great because, um, we got to really connect and we got to work in groups. And it was great because, um, we got to really connect and we got to work in groups. So I just put what the components were. We really focused obviously on Charlotte Danielson's framework. There's four, um, domains. So planning appropriation with one, the classroom environment, instruction and reflection on teaching. But within those four, there's twenty-two components. So they get very detailed. And we spoke, um, each month when we met, we really broke those down and what that meant. And then we tried to find evidence of us using those components in our classroom. The protege program mixes group meetings with online. You know, we would go back and we would check in online. And then it ended with a, um, culminating presentation. And I put mine on, you know, can you just send this?
Yeah, I will send it to you.
Okay, that's my, my protege presentation. Not very exciting, but we also got guidance on our IPLP. So that was really important. And then we earned units doing it. So as someone, I'm going into my twenty-first year next year of teaching. I was like, not very excited about a protege program. I'm not going to lie. And here's the best part. So this is, I'm giving you a little bit of history on me because this explains kind of like how I went into the protege program and what I was able to get out of it as someone that's been teaching for twenty years. So I have a Bachelor of Science in Education. My master's is in writing curriculum instruction. And I taught for ten years in a Title I school. You can see my district and my schools just get smaller and smaller until I end up at Lakeland. It's just like shrinks and shrink. But this was a really big, the Chula Vista School, this is, uh, I opened a brand new school, wrote all the curriculum for the middle school. And we were a tiny school. We were a big district, but this school that I worked in, we only had ninety seventh graders and ninety eighth graders. So it was a very special, very unique opportunity. And all of our professional development was based on Charlotte Danielson. So when I come into the protege program and they're like, we're going to focus on Charlotte Danielson. I'm like, oh, good, great. So I was not super enthusiastic about it. But if I was, I really wanted to figure out like, what is the point? Like, why do I need to be here? I'm not someone that thinks I know everything. I have a girl's mindset, but I wanted to know, what am I going to get out of this? I needed to figure out something for myself because I thought, I don't want to have to hire a representative for my kids at my house and do this program, these evening meetings. I need to make it worth my while, which is exactly what I did. So this is what I learned. I loved connecting with other teachers from all around the district. It was very, um, enjoyable. It was really important for me to figure out what the culture of the district is here. I've taught in three very different settings. This is probably the most unique setting that I've ever taught in. So, um, I spent a lot of the year in culture shop. Like, I saw cows on the way to school today. That's crazy. And I'm like, no, that's not crazy. Yeah, it is. But it was really important for me to immerse myself in the culture of Lakeland and connect with the other teachers. And sometimes with those first year teachers, I found myself sitting with the same group of girls every meeting. And I love them and they're by watching, so I'll just, hello. They were sometimes very nervous or stressed out about what's going on. So it's really fun for me to just spend time and be like, this is normal, it's okay. So it was, it was a very good opportunity for me to connect. And also for me to learn from the top down, spending time with the superintendent, assistant superintendent. I've never done that. I've worked top for twenty years and never had an opportunity to spend time with the top leadership on a monthly basis. So that is a big deal. So I got to learn like, these are the expectations. This is what we're looking for. This is what we want. I made her buy me circle tables. So where I came from, we just, the culture, um, I taught differently. So I came in here, I was like, I'm going to try this out. I want, kids are kids, they're going to learn. So I want to try how I teach. I want to see if they can do it. That took a lot of convincing. I was very squeaky wheel of those two ladies. But it was a great opportunity to be able to connect with the leadership and with others. I was able to go into other schools. I went to Lakeland Cheer High, walked in all of the E L A classrooms. I wanted to see some alignment between Timberlake and Lakeland. That was really important to me. I went to Timberlake High School and I said, what can I do at the junior high level to bring it up here? So your kids, when you get them, they were, they're ready. They're ready to take, they're learning to the next level. So I was really focused on making connections, not just with the teachers in the room and the leadership, but making connections between the schools. Really my main thing. And if I didn't have a protege class, I wouldn't have had the opportunity to do those things. The other thing I did, because I thought it was really important, is that when they asked if we would do this tonight, I immediately, um, emailed my friends that were in the protege program. I said, if you could share one thing that you got, because I think every voice needs to be heard. What did you learn from this program? I want to share what you have to say. And so these are the things that they came out, you know, some of them had never heard of Charlotte Danielson. So this was new for them and gave them a focus in their learning. They love that they can make a personal connection with Lisa and Becky. They love being able to connect. I think this was a big deal. They felt that it was really important that the dis, like, many times in a school district, the school board, the superintendent, assistant superintendent feel like a very distant governing body. And sometimes as a teacher, you feel like a number. And that's really hard. I mean, I did that for nineteen years in San Diego. But it's not like that here. So it, it felt like we were seen as educators. We could see them as who they are as educators, but we were seen and we were acknowledged. Like they, they saw us and they guided us and they helped us. And that was really important. So I think that is the fact that we all had a voice and we were heard. So I think it's really important. I don't know. I just thought that it was important to hear what everyone else had to say. Because why was it not that exciting? But if you want to email me because you have a question, I just wanted to use all my bit emojis. They're so cute. My students don't, they just roll their eyes. Yeah. So that's it. Yeah, if you can just, you know, that's, yeah. Thanks. Have fun at your meeting. Thanks for coming. It's, it's funny. Check for that. Thank you very much, guys. Two opposite people if I've never seen. I was thinking to myself, who might talk to her about that drama in the LA opening at Timberlake High School? Wouldn't she be perfect? Yeah, she has the energy. I don't know if she's, she's small. Hers, if you do a learning walk with us next year, her students love her. She tells you they like roll their eyes, they love her. They absolutely just connect with her immensely. Okay, for, for the superintendent report, there's just a couple of things I want to tell you and I'm just going to do a brief overview I told you I would do. The superintendent, Region One Group continues to meet, we're meeting now just twice a week, Tuesdays and Thursday mornings to discuss everything going on. You know, really right now, we're concentrating on extracurriculars, um, facility usage, and then all of the reentry plans for the fall of COVID. So, um, by June thirty, we're supposed to have a state guided stock that's coming. In the presentation, I'll just show you, there's a lot of different subcommittees. Ms. Sexton is actually on one of them. They asked me to be on one, but then they said no because, um, only one person from each district can be on. So she actually is on, um, the student instruction one that you'll hear about more later. By June thirty, they're going to have this guidance stock that's coming from the State Board of Education and the governor's office. And it really is the collection of best practices. It's really, um, modeled after Georgia a lot in structure and how it's structured. There's a green, yellow, red, mild, you know, moderate to extreme if you have cases. And then they, it's really kind of a parallelogram, they're calling it. And it's just a format of how you go from one stage to the next. And a lot of gatekeepers along the way. If you're here, yes, go here, no, go here. So the format is going to be very similar to the Georgia and, and then the Oregon models just structurally. But then they'll be really itemized and really, or housed locally at each district. So I'm just going to give you a couple of examples. They said the five main areas are the busing practices is a very big deal. Transportation, busing is a, a very big deal. Mitigation protocols, social distancing protocols. They have like a room calculator we'll be looking at right now. They're looking at our smart footage of rooms. And there's a room calculator to how to set zigzags up and social distancing. They said at this point, if they're pretty sure, um, the superintendent from Portland Lane that's on the, uh, the operations subcommittee said, we are not, they, he is pretty darn sure that they are not going to require masks. And I know Washington and California and Oregon leases that just came out. They're not going to be requiring masks. They may recommend them or they may suggest them, but they definitely said that it's not going to be required. I mean, I just think in his best judgment as of this morning. Then the next group is extracurricular because there's a lot of stuff that goes with extracurricular and sports and all the IHSA, Ohio High Schools Activities Association, all of it that goes with that. And then teaching and learning and the whole modified leases on this one, student, uh, student instruction, looking at, uh, the, how you do it, distance learning is going to be modified, is going to be back in person. All of that, I sent the board the feedback from our staff on how they would like to see that. Those are the five main areas of the report. We'll come back in all of our guidance week. The main thing that I want you to hear, the main decision maker will be local school boards. So at this point, the intent of the governor is that we will be back into face-to-face. Like he would love to see, he said that, and would love to be back face-to-face. My intention is that we will be back and would face-to-face and stretch in the fall. But every school district is different. So with the, the model that comes out with the guidance and then what we're coming to, the ultimate decision will be on local school boards in concert with working with the Panhandle Health District. So, um, our superintendent group said, well, let's get, what does the community, all over different communities, what is their input? What are their feelings? What's the consensus? Portland Lane just started a questionnaire that they put out to their patrons. Ms. Sexton and I are starting with doing just a little update, which I'm going to run through with you just to do a little update up north and down south here. We know a lot of people won't come, uh, because of social distancing, but we are going to report it. Chrissy's going to come and report it and then put it on the website on Thursday night. People will be able to watch that. But we, you know, what are the community opinions in the community? So our superintendent group is going to have a questionnaire. And then I'm going to collect that for our district so that the board has data to be able to look at. Here's what the parents and staff of this district, we just did the staff one and then do a parent one and saying, I wanted to wait a little bit because right now, I'd never know what a month from now people are thinking. So I'm going to wait and do these community updates and then talk to the board at the next meeting. When would you like, and I'm going to show you the questionnaire, get feedback from you all and then say, when would you like to see this go out to the community so that you have feedback? And then we'll start doing, um, having more input from the community and then have the discussion with the board based on the, um, the document, the guidance stock that we get from the state board and the governor's office. So I would welcome you to come, you know, Thursday night, before four P M. We'll be at Timberlake Junior High School. Six P M. We'll be at Lakeland High School. Chrissy will put that into your calendars, just not that you have to go, but then you'll have that request in your calendars. I just wanted to show you what the, um, just an overview of this and what we're going to talk. I'm not going to go into detail because you might come to it or you can watch the reporting, but you can certainly ask me questions. So I'm going to go through what was an unprecedented spring. What are the different things that we lived through from March thirteenth till this point on Thursday? And talk about all of the things that we've been living through. Then I'm going to go into some community feedback, talking about, there's perspectives. Like there's a really a lot of polarity going on right now that I'm getting feedback, like no masks, definitely no masks and then definitely don't, you have to wear masks for my waltz, my kids back. Polarity with, please don't do the visitation week. And there's somebody, you know, said like, I have a spouse that has compromised immune system. And then we have people saying, please, my kids need it. So there's just different, all the different factors. My guess is just knowing the amount of emails and correspondence I'm getting, I think there's going to be a polarity of people that feel both ways. And I think it's going to be important for the board to know where is the consensus on the polarity from this end to this end. And I think it's going to be important for the board to have that information. Because sometimes we only hear from people that are real, feel real strongly one way or the other. But I want some of the majority, you know, some of the other people who maybe are feeling like neutral about it or I feel strong about this, but I don't really care as much about this. Busing, how do people feel? Will they still use busing if we just do one student per seat? And then we cluster by siblings so that you can cluster together to want to see with siblings. And so we talked about some of that. Can you send them with a mask? Will you ever wear one? They don't wear a mask, that kind of thing. So those are things I just wanted the community to know. We have all sorts of feedback, um, about things all different ways. So I want to share that with them. I'm going to talk about how to prepare for the fall. And then I will go into more detail about these pieces. I'm going to talk about the conservative budgeting. I'm going to talk a little bit about what we talked about, um, prior in the, with the budget and really wanting to be prepared on our enrollment right now, knowing some, um, Hayden Canyon charter's opening, there may be another budget holdback. How is the state going to do attendance waivers? What is enrollment going to look like? How is it going to be affected in the fall? So really about being frugal with the taxpayers' dollars while still providing a really good education and making sure that we're not cutting anything that needs to be provided. Talk about the fall reentry plan, a little bit of what I just talked about by the documents. And then explain that if ultimately the board's going to be the decision maker. And of course, we'll wait for the official doc to come out, but all of the, uh, supes and assistant supes that are on these and teachers, that's what they're saying right now is that. And then the base, the stacking is really based on all the other factors. But then I want everyone to know in the community, we will definitely maintain classroom instructional integrity. We are not going to, we're talking about that with Chrissy Thompson about budget. We are not going to have huge class sizes because of this. We are planned, we have the fund balance, we have the COVID, CARES money coming, and we are going to still address any of those class sizes that we need to, similar to the last four years that we've done. So we're going to talk to the community about that so they understand what, how we're preparing for the fall. I'm going to tell them that they're interested in the governor's memo, um, how he wanted us to hold back the reduction. That's going to be linked in there because that will be on our website. I'll talk about, these are the state committee work that they're working on. And I talked earlier about the busing, that goes also under the school operations. And it's a really pretty big subcommittee they're finding with that. And then these, we'll just talk about factors. And these will be other things that people will need to know as we move forward. Some of them have to do with the levy, what was on the levy, when the next levy is coming. Explain some of the, how CARES money is different, how levy money is going into the general fund. Just really want to explain some of the overview so that there's no, um, cloudiness about what does that instructional levy in March mean to our district? And how it's different than some of the other countries? And then at that, I'll give them information, places to call for information. And, um, just wanted to also point out, at that point, I will have the final accountability report done for the second half of the year. So we have to have the second half. And I did share that with the board if there's any questions, um, on that. And if nothing can uplift you better than that top right issue, that is kindergarten graduation at Spirit Lake Elementary. And that is the epitome of joy right there in my opinion. Okay, so that's an overview on what I'm going to be presenting, um, to the community that Ms. Sexton and I will be presenting. The, um, the last thing I want to say on the, on the patron input, I'm very humbled by the number of people that have written in the last couple of, I think when they heard negatives in public input that they have written in. I'm very humbled by that. It's not from me asking people to do that. I think it's from people hearing about what was said and them feeling strongly about it. I think that I also want to tell the board, I don't think public input should be about me. I don't think the public input should be about the district. I don't think it should be about people. I think the public comments is supposed to be designed to be about something on the agenda that a public person wants to say. To actually disparage anyone in this district, myself included, in public comments is not okay. It's not right. And it's really not what this district stands for. And I hope that the board votes and makes a choice not to do that. I have given my heart and soul to this district for four years. I have worked beyond comprehension, not because of I want any accolades or not because I want anyone to write in about what I've done, but because I know it's what's best for kids. Like anybody who's worked with me for any length of time will know, I really truly do what's best for the world. Like I want the world to be a better place. And everything I'm doing is to try to help the students in this district. So anybody who's writing public comments in that has not taken the opportunity to meet with me or talk with me or ask me what my heart is, it's not right. There are people that have wrote public comments that have refused. I have reached out and asked them to meet with me. I've said, please, at least a phone call. And they have refused to talk to me on via phone or in person. And I know that I don't do everything right. I absolutely know there are things I can improve on. I'm human. I don't think I have all the answers. But anybody that has worked with me for the last four years knows, I am willing to admit, admit that I make mistakes. I'm willing to say, let's get further input and make things better. But I guarantee you, these disparaging remarks are very hurtful, not just for me. And I always say I have a fixed skin when you're in leadership, you have to. But it's not right for us as a school district. I do not want the heart and soul of this district to be about people saying, Jason Bradbury, the association president said, I've been in this district for all these years. I've never heard anybody say anything negative about anybody in public comments. Because that's not what this district stands for. So whether they're bad about me or whether they're bad about other people or the district, I really hope that the board, I don't even want to hear positive comments. I want to hear, I want the positive comments people to come and present to you and interact with you and show you what we're about. I don't want people to be wasting time saying bad things, good things. I think that we need to be focused on the kids and showing you what we're doing. Being out in the schools when we're open again. I think that we need to be focused on the kids and showing you what we're doing, being out in the schools when we're open again. And I just really want to say, I hope the board doesn't do these type of public comments anymore. Because I think it's harmful for the district as a whole. I just don't feel like it's really what our Y is about and what the majority of the people in this community really want for our kids. So.
I apologize. I'm sorry. To make sure that we follow our policy, and I feel that I let everybody down with this, allowing these remarks. Part of the warning, that's not what the public comment was supposed to be about. It was supposed to be about something on here, and it says our policy. So I take responsibility in not following our own policy. The whole online thing is really through me, and it was hard to navigate that for me. So we didn't get that straight down and figure out, we're not even following our own policy. So I apologize to everybody here that I didn't uphold that and then allow this to continue as long as it has. So I am sorry. But probably I should have taken control of that and I didn't. And you don't have to defend yourself here if you don't. I mean, so you need to, but you should never come to this point. You really have to defend yourself completely. Empty breath. Box breathing, right? Okay, I heard you.
No, I was.
Yeah, thank you for listening. Does anybody have any questions on her superintendent's report? I hope everybody can make it to the Thursday meetings, it would be helpful.
And if not, it will be filmed, so we'll put it on right afterwards. So people who plan to go will see it right in real time right then after.
I won't be able to make it. I was interested in going, but I'll be calling up and I'm going to watch it.
Chrissy's going to videotape it, so.
I would see how the community responds and all that. So I'll definitely watch it then. Do you think you might have another one before school opens?
Absolutely. I just wanted to start, and then I really feel like the board will probably want to, I'm going to bring a questionnaire template to show you for things that we can send out to get feedback, some things that Portland Post follows, Sam Point, Honors Berry Mullen, all the whole region one have worked on. Based on what some of the guidance coming out and then what some of the other states has looked at. I don't know if you saw today that, maybe it was yesterday, the Boise went back a stage. So I think it's best for us to be prepared. And really, one of my primary drops is giving you all folks, so that you don't, I mean, you're volunteers. I want to be able to do the work for you. So if you want to know what my constituents, not just the ones that email you, but let's give an opportunity for all the constituents to say, if given the opportunity, would you want your kids to be an extracurricular? What if busing was like this? If we had A days, B days, or week by weeks? Or if we had start, a late start and then early, early start and a late start? Or if we could put everyone together, but we make sure there was not one of our regular 900 square foot classrooms? You can get 24 kids, and if you do the social distancing, if you go around the outside and do a zigzag? We figured it out, and then you can get 24 kids. So some of our classrooms, we could get the whole, some of the bigger ones, and at secondary, we couldn't. So put that be in a bigger spot. Like our brains are really starting to work. But for us to plan all of this and not know what the parents want is doing a disservice for you folks. So really, what we want to do is we want, our district leadership team wants to gather that information in for people to, so that you have all the data that you can to make. Because ultimately, it really sounds like it is going to be a board decision. And so I want you to have all of the information that you can have.
Well, I hope it's not a board decision based on, you know, with a mandate behind us. I mean, that's kind of what it's thought like this, you know, this spring. It's a board decision, but.
But not.
You make the rise of, you know.
And you're going to take it.
Well, I. I think it's different, but go ahead. With respect to that, it's the board decision. The comment was stated that it is in concert with the health district. And so it almost feels as if, you know, we're not in alignment with the health district, then we're trapped. And that's not.
And I want to speak before we're done, but today when we have this meeting and they're getting closer to being done. Because it will be done a week from today, where this draft will be out. There have been, not in our state, but there have been death threats with health districts throughout the country. There were definitely regions in our state of the health districts that they were not in alignment. And they figured out, all the seven health districts figured out, we're not all in alignment, and this is not good for our people. So they actually all came together and said, we don't want to be the final person. Like we want to give guidance, but we don't want to be the person that says, yes, you can have a graduation. No, you can go back to school, not to go. So they want to remove themselves. My understanding of talking with this group of superintendents that are in these subcommittees, they do not, they do not want to be the ultimate person anymore. They want to say, this is our recommendation. They just this morning at 8:00 sent out new recommendations. That would be in, I'll be giving that to the board when we're moving forward. But they just put out brand new recommendations this morning. And they definitely have taken, I think, a step back as far as wanting to put the onus back on the local school boards. And I think the governor is really saying, in our state, we really want to be back face to face. And you saw with the staffing back, I mean, people just want to be back face to face if they can. If we can maintain, do some mitigation things, maintain social distancing, and have some preemptive proactive, like taking temperatures before you come, know some kids if they're sick. Sure buses are, have the social distancing. If people are sick, that they go home, that we have normal staff that isn't there, and we make accommodations for them. And having a Plan B, C, and D, like if something happens, what's the, how do we do this disinfection? And how do we get a word out to parents, a communication strategy? How do we get back in and if people have, still can have the ability to have online teaching if their student has to be at home? Which we just got pushed into. And like I told you, I won't go on and on, but our staff has been phenomenal how they stepped up. But they do or are asking for, let's have a more professional development about this, which we weren't able to offer, so.
How do you plan on getting the feedback from the parents, like the students?
Excellent question. And one of the things that this group heard about back from when the bond did not pass in August. We went out and we did a complete parent survey and got, can you remember, Brian or anyone can remember how many parents did? Was that from that community input? There was a ton, she will look it up. But there's a lot of feedback from parents, most we've ever got on anything. I thought it was like 1,200, but she didn't look it up. The feedback, then we went and did community input forums at three sites, Spirit Lake, Apple, and down here. And so we got feedback, so for patrons, what we heard loud and clear is not everybody looks on the website. Like we had people say, and we told the board this, some people say, the only place I look on the website, you need to have it on the website. Then we had some other people say, I never look on the website. I want, I think that you need to send out emails, that's how I get my information. And other people said, if you text and have a report, if you do texting, I will always go to a text. And then we had some people that said, yeah, if you put something in the paper. Remember people, we don't look at the paper anymore. So in the actual board meeting, you guys remember this? There were so many different things that I'm like, okay. So what we actually summarized from all of that, the highest amount people would like to get something, I love this. In the mail, they would like the old fashioned, put the postage stamp, here's the actual facts. Which, and it is surprised me, but I have to say, I was, it was, but I, and I was surprised, I will be honest. I really felt like everything would be, like basically anything would be electronic nowadays. But even people that I thought were very tech complete were like, no, I like to be able to get it in the mail and look, here's what's going on. So, and we legally can send out, can send out facts for that. We can send out facts. So we made a commitment as a district, when I put the plan, and you guys, you four have heard this, the Plan B on going forward for following through with however we may get to another bond or for the instructional levy is going to be about small community meetings where people can have dialogue back and forth with the district leadership team, all of us, about ask questions. Just like we did today, back and forth, ask questions, small cottage meetings. And then being able to do facts out in a postage thing home. So people are receiving that. And I would ask that we can do a postcard saying, please do our community survey, here's the link. Also, you can find it on our website, one click. We have a 10-minute max survey for you because we need your input for the fall. And so that's how I would, my proposal to the board would be, to gather the feedback. Now, we do get a lot of parents, 11, Chrissy, is wonderful, as you know. 1117, so 1,117 parents responded, biggest ever, you know, for that. So that's a lot. If I send out a Sky Alert to parents and say, we need your input for the fall, I bet you we get even more than that now from parents. But if you want patron input about other things also, you know, how we're approaching it, that aren't parents, that are patrons in the community, I would think that we'd need to send home a little postcard that asks them to do the survey. So that would be up to the board if you all want to do that.
So I have a question. And I want to bring it up now because the fall's coming up really quick. I don't want us to get in on the hamster wheel with the governor and the local health and the school board. Because when Michelle did the research, she found that Panhandle said that the governor, we have to follow the governor's rules. And the governor said that the school board is the ultimate decision, but they have to follow Panhandle Health's rules. And so everybody was passing it. It just, I mean, if we're going to have control based on recommendations, my concern is with the governor. The language, because that's the ultimate, that's the ultimate law in the state of Idaho. So I just want to know if you can reach out and try and make sure that we don't get back on the same hamster wheel where everybody wears it to where.
Nobody takes responsibility.
Nobody takes responsibility, and nobody can make a decision because we really could.
Yeah, and effort to do all of this, to find out our hands are really tied, even though they told us they weren't. Really be able to sign energy and have forever. Yeah, that's a good point.
And they have a, they have a separate subcommittee in one of those areas that Debbie Kriechfield is on. And the governor's education board is on. So I am going, I will directly connect with those, with that group.
That's, that's very specific concern in mind. We're going to go through all this, and it will be part of that.
Yeah, and we've lived through that, so I'm going to follow up with that exactly.
Okay, we're going to move on to the incentive agenda. So some needs are going to have to, I was not on the meeting, so the board meeting minutes, if anybody has anything on that, I can't believe. Yes, there are.
Correction.
Michelle and I were really going through.
Yeah.
We were making all oceans in secondary.
Page three. That wasn't slow. And you had the.
Yeah, the, on page three, on number two, we're both with the motions, the first two motions listed. I think what it was, was one of them I made it, and the second one, Ramona made it, and we, I, we seconded.
I can go to the last.
Thank you.
But I don't see it all specifically.
Yeah, I know, I, so.
I was looking at that.
I didn't second anybody, I didn't do much.
Oh, wait, I had to get one. I was just making sure.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the method of freezing with corrections taken?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the method of freezing with noted corrections.
I'll second that. Motion taken, everyone, if they're saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone want to vote? We have a meeting here. HR items?
I would just like to ask my standard question, if any of the resignations have provided any exit issues.
We are, yes, and we are going to do, I asked HR Director Cunningham that she would do a report for the board. So she will put them all together so that nobody's identified. And I'm thinking either mostly become, I can do it annually at the end of the year, I think would be also best for the board. Otherwise, we can do it semi-annually if you'd like.
Okay, as in, as in getting a more, like a monthly report, who makes this?
I think we do it more often. We rarely have people, like usually people at the end of the year are leaving to go to a different job. I just don't want anybody, if they don't want to be identified, to be able to be identified, you know, in the.
No, and that I can absolutely respect. I just think that, you know, there may be information that we need for decision making.
Right. So what do you guys think quarterly? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, and not knowing how often they occur, because it seems that I often ask the question, and people, no, not yet.
We have our first one this year. So we just got our first one, and she can offer it to everybody. And they can certainly even do an informal one and come and she didn't meet with her, they can do it. So.
Well, I suppose we should, I would say if we budgeted for quarterly with the expectation of semi-annually, with the end goal to be annually based on how many are coming.
You know, kind of parallel marriage.
That's, I think, perfectly to say it. The rest of the board, it's okay. Perfect.
It's going to be a motion to accept the HR items?
A motion to accept the HR items as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion second, everyone, if they're saying aye. Anyone want to vote? Three numbers here. So we'll go on to the action items. So the first one, we're going to look at approving the design of the fall, that's a decision for Lakeland High School, the junior high, Lakeland High School, and Timberlake Junior High School as presented. So this is just the.
This was best case scenario.
Yeah.
We don't have finalized IHSA aid for the fall. And so these are the best case scenario if we are back into.
Is this given to somebody?
Yeah. Just putting the dates aside, but we don't know for sure yet.
And all the costs and all that is in the budget for all of this, and even the kids, it's already there.
Yeah.
And did the athletic, who put the schedule together?
So it's a process. They have an athletic activities director in each of the two comprehensive high schools where they have IHSA aid sanctioned activities, which are all the sports and choir drama and speech. And they put together the schedule. What they actually do is in their league, they come together, they have a whole regulation, they have a whole board book. On board board policy on each IDL and IML, the different leagues. And they have how many five days they have to play, four days they have to play, out of state, that kind of stuff. They put it all together. They sit down and they kind of start bargaining with each other. And so they'll play on this, okay, we have a little meeting here. It's a very intense process, I've observed, to get your schedule full. And you have enough, your same league, do you have some competitors that are harder? So you push yourselves and push your athletes. And then they, so they work through that, all the athletic directors work that, activities directors. They run it by the principals, the principals prove it, and then it goes to the board.
Okay. So there's a motion to approve the fall online schedules for the Lakeland High School.
So, sorry. So are these schedules contingent on anything coming down the, down the road?
Definitely. The, again, we don't have final, the IHSAA is another subcommittee that Ty Jones, he's the director for the state. And he is, they're still working on, like we not, we are not sure, how is football going to look? How is wrestling going to look? And wrestling's not a cool winter sport, but we, we just have a lot of questions in our mind. I know, I can give you one example of volleyball that they've been talking about. Okay, we don't have fans in the first three rows, and then they social distancing. We don't switch benches, we don't switch balls, they switch, you know what I mean? Like we don't, they normally switch benches, let's not do that, let's stand around the side. And then, you know, he said, Ty Jones, well, how are we going to do that? It's competitive, we have to switch. Like, no, we're in the middle of trying to recover from a pandemic, so we are. So there's making all, looking at all different kinds of accommodations for different sports.
But with respect to the accommodations, although it's the impact of the schedule, because I'm just. Possibly, yes. Okay, so what is the push to approve it now as opposed to waiting to see what's coming down the path for, right, for this?
We could wait, as long as they have them in place. We just typically, this is always the month that we do them. Um, I, we could wait, um, as long as they have them in place, we just typically, this is always the month that we do them. We could certainly wait until we get more guidance from the state and from IHSAA. Um, we can certainly wait, I can tell you that the athletic directors will probably be like, boo, we'd rather them approved than we know that the board has approved the schedule. And then knowing that we could, that we're always gonna, anything that we do from the board level of contingent on what, how it may change in the fall, that's always gonna supersede the schedules, like, I feel like they would be happy if they were, okay, this, the schedules were approved and then the report. But either way, whatever the board's comfortable with, um.
These are just the dates.
The dates, schedules will always change due to things that happen, um, weather, you know, change in the spring especially.
And they get changed a lot once they're in place.
No, that I understand, I guess I'm just more curious why there's the push, given that we know that there's external factors that are potentially way in.
Um, and I'm not sure if they, if the athletic directors would be pushing for it or not. Um, just in my experience of working with athletic directors, I know it takes them a long time to get them together. I certainly know they are understanding that the fall schedules may be changed, but we can certainly, if the board, uh, decides that they don't want to do them yet, we can certainly unwait, uh, and based on what IHSAA.
Do we have any idea when that's coming at us, or is it more of a?
They are.
It's going to happen, we just don't know when.
The IHSAA is one of the subcommittees that's working within that guidance doc. They're hoping to have something by June 30, I'm sure they'll have, which is a week from today, I'm sure they'll have a recommendation. I don't know if they'll be completely, just like we're talking about the fall, I don't know, there's still a month, a whole month in July, like, whether we have camps, don't have camps. Um, are definitely a lot of contingencies, so we, we could go either way, whatever the board's preference is actually on this.
If we okay the schedules tonight and something did change, would it come back to the board for approval?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. That'll actually be part of the plan, I think, when you guys, you know, when you get to the point that you're making a decision as a district, how our fall reopening goes, extracurricular is going to have to be a part of that discussion, for sure.
And I, for one, would like to, um, I mean, the directors have gone through the process of trying to figure out the schedule. As if things were gonna be normal, I personally am an optimist. And I like the idea that people have hope, that, yeah, they're, they're looking to the fall to resume things as normal. I mean, my personal opinion is half of the outcome is the mindset going in. So I personally support, um, trying to, you know, give people a sense of normalcy and give them something to look forward to, so. That's kind of my, because i- i- it's all subject to change based on, on what happens, it's all, it's all definitely unknown.
So there's a detriment to approving tonight with respect to that.
I think it may change. It probably will, I, I hope it doesn't though, I hope that we can find a path to, uh.
Let's hold on to our mistakes.
So then I'd like to make a motion, if there's any other, to approve the fall athletic schedules for Timberlake High School, Timberlake High School, Timberlake High School, Timberlake Center. Cross my fingers.
I'll second that. Have a motion second, everyone in there say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who votes? Three number two here. Next is the new courses, uh, for Timberlake High School. So the first one is small animal care, and if you could speak to that.
Yep, Assistant Superintendent, can I speak about the courses?
Yes, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but it's the board, and it is your purview to approve all courses that are taught in Timberlake.
Now, these courses are being added to the FMA program, is that correct?
Yeah, they're both add, the agriculture classes, yes. It's, uh, when they started up there, they started with just, uh, one or two classes.
Right.
And had fifteen-ish kids in the class, and the programs just exploded up there. And so they're, uh, constantly pushing to put more classes into the, um, program to create a, a really strong course for kids who are going down that path.
I think they're excellent courses, all of them, whether the kids find a future in that or not, I think it teaches so much of responsibility and life skills and.
I can't agree to more.
Yeah, I, I loved it when I read all of them. Yeah.
Aside from the specific courses, uh, I would, um, love feedback from you as far as the format of these course proposals for you, I'm trying to make sure that you got all of the information that you need to make an educated decision about the courses that we are offering. Um, so this particular teacher, I have to send it back and say, I really need how you're gonna evaluate the teachers and, or the kiddos, and so I put together a template. So if this isn't meeting your needs, I, that's information I would like to have, so then I can modify it to make sure you have the information you need.
I think the only part that I would have liked to see is a little bit more information was underneath the scope and sequence. Like maybe instead of just the very high level, maybe just, yeah, just a little bit more, um.
Some, some kind of sub.
Yeah, what, yeah, what exactly is in this unit, you know, what are being the high level topics? Other than that, I thought. Let me self-explain.
Too many questions about any of the courses specifically, you know? Mrs. Dorian is doing a backwards job of sort of this program's issue.
I kind of figured that we'd see more turnout, kids wanting that, wanting more. You're wanting.
Yeah, I love it. That's great.
What's the community buy-in with that program?
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve Timberlake High School Small Animal Courses presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the Timberlake High School Small Animal Course as presented.
I'll second that. Have a motion second, everyone in there say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who votes? Three number two here. Next is approve or deny Timberlake High School Applied Livestock Management Course as presented?
I'll approve this, I'll make a motion to approve the Timberlake High School Applied Livestock Management Course as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion second, everyone in there say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who votes? Three number two here. Uh, approve or deny Timberlake High School Agriculture Leadership Course as presented?
I make a motion to approve the Timberlake High School Agriculture Leadership Course as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion second, everyone in there say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who votes? Three number two here. Next is to approve the Timberlake Ministries Facilities for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. I believe, uh, I was gonna speak with that, any more questions?
I was just wondering about cost. And prices, everything stays the same, it's just basically a rollover, I didn't know what it was before, the cost and experience.
Cost of.
Facility.
They were reading the facility, yeah.
Oh. Yeah, for real life, we keep it the same for, uh, this year, um, and, which is quite a bit reduced from, so we have, we follow our facilities, uh, these schedules. Um, if organizations, uh, you know, sometimes if they, I don't know, they sort of partner with you, do sort of, or lack of that word, in-kind contribution, where they, uh, for example, real life, they've actually done activities with us, they, in a normal year, they actually provide the, uh, their auditorium for Timberlake High School graduation, no cost, they've done, they, they actually provide, that's our, what's that official, our.
Our.
Our reunification site, if there was like any, you know, a real emergency, we had to evacuate a school and, and leave it offsite. So they're, they've just been a good, a good partner, uh, but yeah, the fee will be the same. And still, I, I think last year we paid eight thousand dollars for about a year or so, for them, that's a really good deal, but it's a good deal for us, it's those dollars that come, that comes back to our facilities.
Is there a plan for them to, um, deal with the cleaning, the sanitation, or is that gonna just be done after they come in, or how's that?
We have, that's part of their fees will cover, um, is the, uh, we have that covered with our custodians, um, with our staff. Um, they actually did, um, you know, and sometimes they actually did help clean, but really that, we need to do that, make sure it's done correctly. But yeah, we, um, we make sure we have that covered and work with maintenance on that, and do that when also other churches went in, and our other buildings too, it's the same process.
And they do have a plan for future site, like they have, they have, they have a plan, so it's not.
That's part of the board's policy. Okay, I don't know if this is, um, relevant, but our protocol with regard to being within a building, as opposed to a church's protocol to being within a building, uh, if they're not in alignment, what trumps the other, or do they take the church protocol and bring it into our building? Or do we mandate that you have to follow our protocol with regards to the whole COVID thing?
Oh, for COVID, so what we've done with that, I've asked each group to provide their mitigation of what they're doing.
Okay.
Um, so it's really their protocol, the other thing that I've also just sent out, I can show you, I could send a copy to the, to the board, is a, a group waiver.
Okay.
Of, of liability and accepting of risk, pretty much saying that we are mitigating to the extent we can, um, but we can guarantee you won't get it, and I can forward that to the board. Um, and we have one that we're using for our, and this was recommended, uh, by our district attorney, one for groups now. Um, and all, even for like the rep, our rep, when they use our facilities for athletics, or like the junior tackle, any of those. Um, and then for our camps right now, I shouldn't even say camps, so right now we have, um, some of our football coaches are, have some, uh, precautions and protocols in place, but they're doing weight training for during the summer. And, um, they were very proud and saying, this is what we're gonna do, how we're gonna social distance, how we're gonna disinfect. You know, I have a desk doing it, we're disinfecting those every day, but they're there and just met with Tim Cronk, the athletic director at Timberlake, and saying, coaches are on, and they know that this was, they don't follow the rules, they're gonna, it could be taken away, and the kids have been really good because they were chomping at the bit. But given some of the guidance from the attorneys, we're gonna have every student's parent who's participating sign a waiver, an individual saying that we're doing what we can, but you understand there's maybe a little bit of risk here, and if you don't wanna take that risk and.
Right, no.
Right, so no, I mean, some of those things, yeah, we're thinking about, and that will probably become that form, just like we have our concussion protocols that.
Right.
Will probably become part of the form for our regular athletics this year, where the parents will have to, uh, you know, sign, just like some of the other waivers, just because of the reality, um, it's just sort of crazy, but.
Well, no, and that, that's good to know, I just, given that this is sort of a business transaction, I wanna make sure that we're protected with respect to the fact that someone's paying for a building, and then now are we opening ourselves up?
Correct, and that's why we have the group waiver, I'll send that, uh, the template to, that will have them sign in it. Language is very similar in both, um, and I looked, actually when I was looking at this, I could see that other towns are doing that, or apartment rep apartments across the nation. You know, one of them, I saw like the town Gilbert in Arizona, that they're all doing very similar things, saying that, okay, you're in our facility, you wanted, you're, you're using these, and we're taking precautions, but.
Use it your own risk, yeah.
Yeah, you know, those sort of.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll forward that to, uh, uh, to the board if you can.
So these types of transactions, do we, does the district, and I want to apply this here not just because it's a public institution, but, um, does the district become a writer on their liability? Or how does that work?
We ask them to have to, they provide us a certificate of a liability where they assess as an additional sure, yeah.
To be writing.
Yeah, so you make that, correct.
Perfect.
Any other questions?
No.
Can I have a motion to approve or deny real life ministries facilities for the twenty 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 one school?
I'll make a motion to approve the real life ministries facilities for the twenty 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 one school year.
I'll second that. Have a motion second, everyone in there say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who votes? Three number two here. Okay, we're gonna move on to discussion items. So for you, adoption policy, adoption policy thirteen fifteen, so I know that we're all gonna show with them, so. And this is just a discussion item, so anyone want to talk to that?
Well, it was a policy that was, sorry, I got locked on mute, otherwise I keep losing my connection. Uh, it was a policy that was brought to us by the clerk, um, it's a policy that we don't have, that ISBA does recommend that we do have, it was missing. Um, and, uh, I don't know exactly why we started here, other than it was the top of lists in the one thousands. And I guess from the board, uh, training we had, we said we'd probably go into the Charlotte Danielson, switch the whole model. So I guess this sort of applies to that, also moving forward with the evaluations. And then we worked with Chrissy, we went through it, we looked at the IDAPA codes, we looked at the, um, the law itself, we reworded it based on that, and this is sort of what we came up with.
Good job.
Yeah, it was a challenge.
I wouldn't say that.
There's still a lot of work on it. Those little things that may get pushed and all, and that's important, so. And you want to add to the show? So then is this gonna come before us, or go with additional corrections? Anything else on that one? And then we have the policy, first rate of the update policy eleven here membership. So we need to work on that as well.
There was a simple date change, it was, it had the old date from the old election, you know.
And then that's, yeah. And then we did add a paragraph, I was writing out a statute.
Oh, yeah.
They really clarified, the wording and the model was a little weird, so we clarified that a new trustee would start in the first January meeting after an election, or have appointed at the first regular meeting after.
You get points. And then I thought, it was my understanding, the final statement, the all comments or commitments the board shall be made during a regular or special meeting would be brought up to that last paragraph, so it's not just gonna be a date. Well, no, because you had to cross out the line of it.
Oh, yeah, and that was weird, because I wanted to show you guys what we took out, and so it will be moved up at the bottom of it all. So it'll be clean when you see it on the approved or denied next, or next board meeting.
Yes.
Any questions on that? Anything for you on that, ladies?
Oh, I, I, I do, uh, just go, the, versus all trustee shall participate on equal basis, um, I don't know. We don't always, I'll have to be here, I don't know. We all have the, uh, opportunity to participate. Because oftentimes, somebody will miss a decision for the day. So, maybe we.
So just to simply add, all trustee shall have the opportunity to participate on.
That's what I think.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Because I don't wanna be locked in the after.
October ten, I'm gone for a week. No, maybe ten days. I think I'm gonna.
Shutting my pillow.
First kill.
Um, so then next is board. Um, so then next is board member input for future agenda ideas. Again, I just think it's important to discuss, um, our patron input policy and make sure that. Yes.
And then honestly, I think, I don't, I think the patron input policy is correct. I just don't think.
I don't think, I don't.
I think that we followed it when this, when the whole Zoom stuff came on. Because in the past, you know, if it's on the agenda,
Yeah.
you can speak to that point. It's the help, it's the help, just, you know, yeah, it's never, you know, personal's always been, you know, when it involves a name, it's always been, you know, correspondence from reports, whatever is in the executive session because it's personal, you know, information that shouldn't be made, not like for the rights of any of the people, whether they're teachers or students or any of them. That's why we, we, you know, have motions to student aid dot, to dot whatever. So, you know, it, it's just, that we can't afford it. That was opened up because, and again, you know, people are also, they can email in or get on a meeting. Anonymity really, I mean, yeah, it's not anonymous, but if you're not, you know, in front of somebody, you get a lot more of, I say things, but, and angry, um. Specific, we just need to follow the policy.
So I don't know, I might need to use same card or something. But that's an option, so, cause I didn't follow what you're supposed to be doing there, so. Something's wrong, you know?
Well, truth be told, it wasn't followed at the last meeting either.
No, not that it is.
I mean, but you were here.
He was in the devil.
Of the devil.
Absolutely.
Wait, I mean, we just had, you know, lots of conversations, I mean, a lot of input. It was positive input, but it wasn't addressing an agenda item. So it shouldn't have been curtailed simply because it wasn't an agenda item. So, yeah, I mean, it's, I guess maybe.
So maybe what we need to do is look at both those policies, because one actually re-references policy we don't even have.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, we, maybe we should open those two policies that time.
Okay.
That would be, that would be. That would be great. Yeah, that's a good on the dock. That'd be a good start.
Yeah, and then we would be able to do it all together, you know, this is how we're doing it, this stuff's gonna be.
And then, um, I guess, uh, input for future, yeah. Um, I received a comment about, um, the public's access via Zoom, that it's not very clear, that it's hard to hear, that, you know, we're not, we are not doing enough effort so that they can actually see what's going on. So that's why I was like, turn that around. Okay, we, so I don't know if maybe, um, we can speak with the tech people and get them on board to see what we can do to better improve the Zoom. Cause I think it's great that people should be able, if they can't make it here, they shouldn't be, um, not, they shouldn't have access to it. And I think this is a great platform to give them access. But it should be a quality platform. It shouldn't be, well, we're just doing the best we can with our tech people and all that stuff. Maybe if they can come aboard, either to offer education, insight, whatnot, or some form of improvement so that our patrons can actually benefit from the online viewing platform thingy. I think that'd be great. So. I don't know what we wanna do.
I'd share that. The multi-directional microphone to begin with would be a huge improvement.
Yeah, I felt that, cause they were, the, the people that talked to me were like, we wanted to hear what the budget thing was about, but we couldn't hear. And then we couldn't see it. And then we couldn't see the thingies. And I'm like, oh, well, you know, I could, you know. So that's all that really matters. But it doesn't, I mean, they're calling, they're, they're zooming on, they're doing what they want. They wanna be contributing, be part of it, and we're not helping them.
Mr. Wallace, could you?
Yeah, just that, you know, for example, uh, Corley Schools.
Uh huh.
You know, they're, they're doing Facebook Live with it, but in their boardroom, which is a midtown center, it's really a more self-composed meeting space than this. And we had fixed camera setup.
Okay.
Every, um, uh, board mentor and superintendent or the speakers were at a microphone going back to, uh, a central
Okay.
uh, place. So they had, uh, invested dollars, uh, with equipment to, to be able to do it. Because you're right, you would have to have microphones, better cameras, um, to, to capture it all. I mean, you just can't do it with, uh, computer screens. It's very difficult.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, cause I don't know what is needed to go all into it to make us more, um, efficient in this platform of, of the Zoom thing. So, um, maybe table for discussion for another day is, do we want to go down that path to invest in ability to present ourselves online in a more structured, solid format that is accessible for everybody in clarity?
We'd have to get some numbers though, cause I would harm committed us to much money with the budget cuts that we're facing.
Well, no, I'm not asking us to commit to money. I'm asking us to consider, is that a path we wanna take?
But that is part of the budget, so.
I wish, I'll probably explore options.
Yeah. Okay, so now I need a motion to enter into executive session for article seven four two zero six one.
I would like to move to enter into executive session for article seven four two two six one.
Second to that motion. And the motion is second, we'll follow.
Trustee Major.
Yeah.
Trustee Thompson.
Yes.
Trustee Crystal.
Yes.
Trustee Iyer.
Yes.
And Shannell's ahead.